Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 Tumwater City Council Work Session. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Othouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabi.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am present. Join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Our first item is a special item, and we have Matt Cannelly, who is with LOT, is it General Manager? Executive Director. I know, it's every, every organization's different. And so he will be doing a presentation tonight on the state of the utility. So welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me, Council, just to give you an overview of what we're doing at LOT and see if you have any questions. So this is a, an update that we do for our partner jurisdictions every year. And I added some very specific things for Tumwater that you might find interesting of what we're doing. So first off, I like to start out with, what is LOT? When you hear LOT, a lot of times in public meetings, it's good to remind everybody that LOT is Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Thurston County. So back in 1976, the four partner governments came together and for regionalization and felt that it would be better to have one entity treat wastewater rather than each one of the jurisdictions have their own wastewater treatment facility. So our Board of Directors, of which Councilmember Dahlhoff is our Vice President, is made up of an elected official from each of the partner jurisdictions, and we have our business meetings once a month on the second Wednesday. Our mission is to preserve and protect public health and the environment by cleaning and restoring water resources for our communities. And we're a bit distinctive when we think about our role because we're formed by four partner governments. We're actually a nonprofit corporation. That's the way they did it in 1976. And we act as a public entity in every way because we are a formation of four public entities. And failure is not an option when wastewater flowing down to our facilities 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we need to make sure we have the infrastructure to support that. We're highly regulated. And we're accountable on multiple levels. So you think about the ratepayers, so the citizens of Tumwater that pay their bills. The partner jurisdictions, of which, you know, we have an elected official on our board from the city of Tumwater, but all the other partners as well, and then state and federal regulators. So that's how we're, we're, you know, meeting all those different needs in the role that we play. Good, thank you. Our service area is the urban growth boundary. So we serve a population of just shy of 124,000 people. And some of the residents are not in the city, so they may not be directly in the city of Tumwater, but maybe connected to Tumwater services, so they pay into that LOT treatment fee. And the way that it's billed is that the ratepayers, the citizens of Tumwater, get a bill, and the cities are responsible for the conveyance of the wastewater, so those conveyance pipelines, the pump stations. And then when it gets into the bigger pipelines and the treatment facilities, that's where LOT takes over. So if you come to our main treatment plant, and I would love to give you a tour, if you ever would like to come down, and I've given a tour to the mayor before and some other folks, that you come down and you see lots of equipment. And it's fun to walk around and see all this equipment. So I'll kind of give you a virtual tour tonight if you, if you don't get a chance to make it. But you'll see lots of different equipment. You see open basins and buildings and treatment facilities. Very large pumps throughout the facility. We use a lot of power in order to move millions of gallons of wastewater a day. You'll see, even see a brown bubbling river and all sorts of process piping and different things happening. And then you'll start to see things getting cleaner again and clearer, big open areas, and at the end, you'll see clean water. And so that's what we do at our main treatment plant down in the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. So wastewater from the city of Tumwater makes its way, most of it makes its way to our Capital Lake Pump Station and onto the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. We treat about 13 million gallons per day. And so to put that in perspective, if you take a football field and you build a four-story building on top of it and fill the entire thing with raw sewage, that's what we make clean again every day. Every single day, we make that clean for our population and the environment. And we have the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound. It's something our community should really be proud of. So it's the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound, and with this major process upgrade we just undertook, we actually have some of the best treatment in the entire country now. So excited to share that we won a National Environmental Achievement Award for our recent upgrade. We won, we're one of eight organizations, won one of the best designs in the entire country, and it won Project of the Year in Washington recently in the American Public Works Association. So it's, it's a big deal. And the performance awards that we get, we're very proud of the work that we do. We give tours to Department of Health and Ecology, our regulators. They want to know how other treatment plants in our area can do this level of treatment. And we do presentations for state House Representatives. There's some legislation happening and work that Ecology is doing with regard to Puget Sound, and we also go to conferences and share the work that we're doing. Wastewater Treatment Plant has really evolved, and I had some fun digging out this old photo from the 50s from the original treatment plant. It was built by Olympia back then, so this is before LOT was formed. But wastewater treatment has evolved because originally it was all about, let's build a treatment plant and treat it, just that commodity treatment. We have wastewater, we need to treat it for those regulations. So let's do it at the lowest cost possible, just really regulations driven. And that was carried through all the way through the Clean Water Act. Lots of facilities were built around that time. But then we move into this next phase, and it's public health and more awareness of environmental protection, more awareness of education and how treatment plants can be out there and educating on water. We can recover resources. You know, so there's this whole other wave that has happened that LOT has participated in. One of those beneficial things is reuse of our biogas. That's the methane that comes off of our process. You might have heard about this methane at treatment plants and how it's reused. The way we reuse that is we have an engine generator. We capture that methane. We have boilers as well. We heat our process, but we produce 15% of our plant power comes from the methane that we generate. It's a self-sustaining heating feature of these big digesters that we have, is what we call them. We also provide heat to the Hands-on Children's Museum next door. We also reuse biosalads. So all of our biosalads go over to Eastern Washington as part of a King County program that's, that's been happening for decades, and it's used instead of anhydrous ammonia. So farmers buy this product through a program, put it on wheat fields, and it adds moisture and nutrients to the soil. And the third item is reclaimed water. So drop for drop, treated reclaimed water can be used to offset potable water supplies, as you do here in Tumwater at the Tumwater Golf Course. So if you've ever been out to T Street or you've over, have seen the tank that LOT has, it's a million gallon storage tank, and that provides 600,000 gallons per day in the summer to the golf course. So like I said, drop for drop offset, not using potable water, that reclaimed water can be reused in this way. And this project is a great example of the community amenities that we combine with our projects. Really proud of this one. You can see the public art in the upper right. LOT built the, built the tank, worked with Tumwater Parks Department and staff. And then the city came back and built a park on top of it and overlooking it. So it's a great connection that we can make with the community for necessary infrastructure. We also have an education program, if you've been down to our Wet Science Center, but one entire class from the Tumwater School District goes through our wet center and gets that field trip every year, and that happens in North Thurston and that happens in Olympia. And if you see these numbers here, almost 13,000 people came through our Wet Science Center, and that's, you know, water conservation, that's educating on wastewater treatment, educating on jobs and STEM and all of those things. And it's, this has been a great outreach thing for us, for us to message what we do. But really, it broadens that water focus even beyond wastewater. So I mentioned before about that, those waves of, of progress that wastewater treatment plants have made. But where we're at now is called the wastewater utility of the future. And wastewater utilities of the future are moving more into the space of public service. So yes, we still need to do, at our core, we need to do wastewater treatment at a cost-effective way. We need a resource recovery. We need education. But now, public service, so community support, climate resilience, these broader things that utilities can help provide in our community. So I talk about community support, it's connection fee rebates. You've heard about the connection fees that LOT discounts 50%. So new folks connecting to sewer have to pay a connection fee because that helps us build new infrastructure. But we provide a 50% discount for those that are moving from septic to sewer to help offset that high cost of that connection to promote water quality, as well as low-income housing at 50% discount for connection fees to support that, that growth in the low-income housing and also that helps the unsheltered population in many ways, but also not negatively contributing to water quality. Sanitation resources are related to that. Well, then now it's RV pumpouts, porta-potties, hygiene trailers, those type of things, supporting water quality, but also community support. Wastewater epidemiology is a really cool one. If you've heard about all the COVID testing in wastewater, that's an area that's really blossoming into more than just COVID now. There's RSV and the flu and so many things you can test for in wastewater as a leading indicator of what's happening. And now we're in a world where people aren't going to get COVID tests directly, but we're still sampling wastewater and providing that information to the state so the state can use that information to make decisions. And when you talk about water quality projects, supportive deschutes estuary, recovery, and all the work that's happening there directly relates to our mission and LOT not being regulated further. Supporting projects with the Squawshin Island Tribes, supporting projects with the partners. The more that LOT can help in the water quality space, the, the business case is that LOT will be regulated less, and it's actually more cost-effective to fund water quality improvements out in the system than build new treatment facilities at LOT. Considering that we're only 3% of the oxygen, oxygen impact into Bud Inlet already, and we're going to do a really good job, but we also want to support everything around. And then regional climate efforts is another community support element. And I brought a slide to show you how we've trended over time from the baseline year until now. And you don't see a dramatic reduction, but a per capita decrease of 28% is pretty significant. And that's because as we've grown over time, we need to pump more water. As the community has grown, you basically need to pump more. So we're always fighting that. But also, when we do new projects, we look to make energy improvements. What I'm excited about this for long term is you look at the electricity number, that's the big blue area. So just this in 2022, because we're getting 2023 numbers together right now, 89%, around 90% of our power is electrical. So as Puget Sound Energy starts to get greener on the grid, LOT can also ride that wave to get greener ourselves as we reduce energy, and we can focus on that other, that 10%. And we're doing a climate actions plan right now this year to really get to that 10%. So in the future, as, as the grid goes greener and we're working to reduce around, there may be a future out there, potentially LOT being carbon neutral, and we're exploring that now. A good example of our energy reduction is a recent, that recent upgrade I mentioned before, so two and a half million kilowatt hours per year. So that's approaching 20% of our plant power, the largest power user in Thurston County. We got a grant from PSE for 1.1 million, which is fantastic. The project actually costs 30 million, so 1.1 million is still significant. But the upgrade just dramatically improved our treatment and also saved energy. And you can go to the EPA's website and just type in kilowatt hours per year, and it gives you these great examples that are more tangible to me than two and a half million kilowatt hours per year. It's 3 million miles driven by, by cars every year. So that's pretty significant. And then when we upgrade our facilities, we look for opportunity. So I mentioned before, we have the gas usage, the salads usage, and the water. And now you could add, you know, another renewable component to that list because we had to replace this large structure in the center of our plant for process reasons, but also the roof is very old and needs to be replaced. So we're putting a solar array on that entire flat roof. And it's a real opportunity to take advantage of the tax credits available right now when you replace a roof and put solar on it, but almost 200,000 kilowatt hours per year. So again, trying to find equivalence, it's 5,600 electric vehicle miles. So we have a bunch of electric vehicles. We don't use 5,600 miles per year at all. So this will overwhelmingly support all of our electric vehicles and then some. So I mentioned some LOT infrastructure. We had the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, but we also have a satellite treatment plant. We have reclaimed water plants, major pump stations, pipelines, you know, all of this infrastructure that it takes to do our work. And we're looking out long term. We're looking out to 2050 saying, okay, what infrastructure do we need for the future? And so we just did this plan that was adopted last year by our board. Because of the high level of treatment that we're doing, we actually have built-in capacity, and we can get more treatment capacity if we continue to focus on our existing treatment facility. So we don't need to build new treatment plants all over. That was the original plan back in the early 2000s. Maybe you start building treatment plants everywhere. But we can get so much more efficiency, and it's cost-effective to, to focus on what we have, maybe expand a little bit as it gets in the late 2040s, but ideally, we don't. We just stay within our existing footprint. And so Ecology and the Squawshin Island Tribe are very supportive of that approach, and we worked with them for a couple of years on that. So all of that infrastructure needs to be funded, and that's by the connection fees that, that people connect with. It's also from the monthly fees that we get in order to treat all of this wastewater with that infrastructure. Our capital projects, the things that it take to keep up almost a billion dollars of infrastructure that we have, so capital projects every year, it's about 75%, 73 to 75% is the capital projects or the debt we have to take on to take on these multimillion dollar projects. And so a comparison that we do when we put together our budget, and we're working on a next biennial budget right now, comparison we do is we take the LOT charge that we have for monthly fees, we add that to the city sewer charges, and we get a wastewater rate. And we run some numbers of all the regional utilities like us. And so you can see Tumwater that I highlighted. You can see how far below the regional average that is, and these are numbers published in the last, the last time we did this in the biennial budget, and we'll publish new numbers here as we get into the next budget next year. But you can, and, and I just saw the recent numbers, and it's about the same, by the way. And, but you can see, we have the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound, and we have below-average rates. And so that, that represents good value, in my opinion. So I'll end on just a thank you to the city staff, whether or not, you know, Dan Smith and Lisa are just have been, and all the staff have just been very supportive in all the collaboration efforts that we've done. From capital projects to our pre-treatment program where we would go out together and we inspect food service establishments. We have property things happening and work on MOUs, water conservation, and now strategic planning because we're looking to the future again in this next six-year plan. And we just had a great meeting, pretty much asking, you know, what, what can LOT do to support the city? And it was, it was validation of all the work that we've done together. So thank you to staff and thank you to council for supporting that. That's what I have tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your report. I was curious, how unique is LOT as far as the jurisdictions together? Because I attended a conference and Cheney has their own, you know, their own system. So it seems like a lot of cities just have their own.
Yeah, a lot of cities have their own. There's quite a few regional partnerships, including in our state. I would say the fact that LOT is a nonprofit corporation and founded the way it was in the 70s is just different than the way you would organize it today. There's usually special purpose districts or other things that have been, you know, our structure is working fine. But that's what you see the difference a little bit. But there are more and more regional utilities that there's the value in working together, especially communities that are closer connected.
And then I was curious too, when you talked about potable water, that we use it for our golf course, and then you also mentioned that there was one on Martin Way, and where does that?
The treatment plant on Martin Way produces about the same amount of reclaimed water that we have at our downtown plant. That water goes out to our Hawks Prairie infiltration basins. It's out in the Hawks Prairie area near the warehouses out there, built about 12 years ago. And also goes to an infiltration area that the city of Lacey and Olympia use to offset their potable water supplies out there.
I was curious if they use it at the rack like we do the golf course.
Not yet.
Advantage.
Not yet, yeah.
And then like growing up in California, we knew that we couldn't drink out of the hose because that was ditch water that came out to water. And so, and if I feel funny that we're giving, putting, drinking water on our lawn. So I always, my vision is like someday, could we ever do something with the potable water to be used for, you know, our use and not necessarily for drinking, but for watering purposes someday?
I am so glad you mentioned that because we are working on a kickoff meeting to happen in May that will involve city staff as well to demonstrate that you can create potable water from reclaimed water. Just to demonstrate it, just to show proof of concept. It's been done all around the country for decades, actually. It's very expensive, so it's not, it's not cost-effective to do on a large scale, but just to demonstrate that water should be judged by its quality and not its history.
Great. I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson and then Councilmember Othouser. Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, good briefing. Thank you for that. I have a question on plant security because water plants are now targets. We didn't have to worry about that in the past. So we have bad guys on sidelines probing, trying to wreak havoc in our community. So are you investing in plant security? How secure are you? Is that something that's keeping you awake at night?
For what I can say in the public space, we are secure, and it's twofold. It's physical and it's on the cyber realm. So physical, we have a new plant fence around our entire property. We have three security guards, you know, we have all the physical infrastructure with cameras and all that, and it's been tested quite a bit here over the last few years. But we've invested quite a bit in plant security physically. And then our approach to cyber in general is our plant systems are disconnected from the internet nearly completely. So they're, they're, they're very, very contained as opposed to some other system, what you read about, about water supplies that are kind of interconnected. And a lot of times, places have to do that because they have a lot of different systems all around. And they have to, they have to communicate, whereas we have one main plant. That's another advantage to actually focusing just on one plant.
That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Othouser.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Matt, for the great presentations. Always wonderful when we get you guys here because I feel like I learn something new every time. And I do have a question, but first I just want to say that when we have conversations about regional partnerships and collaboration, LOT is always like the first thing we use as an example of successful collaboration. So I think that's a comment just about kind of the, the wonderful work that goes on there and the appreciation we have for the services that are provided. But my, my question is about the 2050 plan. Does that take into account potential sea level rise in downtown? Like, that's obviously going to be a huge issue over the next few, already is a huge issue for downtown. I would imagine with a lot of that equipment that's so close to the water there that that presents its own unique challenges as well.
Sure. The short answer is yes, we've taken into account sea level rise, both the impact of climate change with more intense storms as well and what that impact is. So we're working with the city of Olympia and the Port of Olympia and the Sea Level Rise Collaborative that we work on. And then the planning infrastructure through 2050 and what we need to do to protect the plant is in that plan. To move the plant would be the estimate probably from six years ago was 1.5 billion dollars. So it's a lot more cost-effective to do the, the small projects that it takes to shore up the plant. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more about education. Sorry. I'm just curious.
Councilmember Swarthout.
Questions tonight about like employment. So what type of people do you have working down there? Like, what kind of education background? Do you need more people? What kind of recruiting does that look like? People are interested in, in, you know, public service like this and being in an agency you're working with LOT, how would they do that?
Yes, so we're always in, looking for talented folks to join us. We have 87 people. About 60 people are the ones that are in the plant and the, and the process and just related to it and maintenance and controls and all those folks. And the rest of the staff are in administrative roles or engineering. People come from a variety of different backgrounds. We have wastewater operators that start as apprentice operators that come in, you know, out of high school. And then that's their career, and you can make a great, you know, trade career out of that. Some operators come to us with full, you know, bachelor's degrees and, and they found their way into wastewater and, and go that route. So what makes a successful employee a lot is belief in the mission that we have. And then, you know, we can teach people if they're the right, they have the right approach, we can teach them how to do it. So we're always in need of, of new people to apply, and our website's updated, and anytime that you hear about somebody that you want to refer us to, please let us know.
Great. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I'll save those for our board meetings. But I just want to give LOT some kudos. You had mentioned briefly like how wastewater treatment had started like the baseline, right? Just the requirements. And what I appreciate about LOT and how you model the way is that that's not your baseline. Your baseline is excellence. And so I think that shows with the programs from the septic to sewer conversion, the affordable housing, the partnerships that you have been doing with the jurisdictions to make things happen. And I look forward to when we're updating our comprehensive plan elements to see how LOT can fit into that for some pilots, right? We look at how ways to build different types of housing or provide different services and how our utilities are working. And if that can be an element to reduce some costs to make something happen, I think that's awesome because I don't think a lot of jurisdictions have that opportunity to partner with a utility like that. So.
Definitely, yeah, definitely that partnership is important. Thank you.
Councilmember Agabi.
So the other day I went to a dentist and he asked me if what time Tumwater is fluorinated. Oh. Carbonated, one of the two. Is it fluorinated?
The, the drinking water?
Yes.
Yeah, so LOT takes care of the wastewater. The drinking water would be on the city side as, and I'm saying that city of Tumwater does not fluoridate their water.
Okay, so now a follow-up to Councilmember Jefferson's question about plant security. Your plant on Martin Way, is it connected to the one by the Bud Inlet?
No. Well, in a way. So there's a pump station that feeds that water to that, that plant. That pump station also feeds the downtown plant, so it actually feeds both plants.
So both are on the internet simultaneously?
Yeah, no. So the, the water produced at the Martin Way facility in Lacey, that water does not go to Bud Inlet after it's cleaned. It goes to groundwater infiltration. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you so much, Matt. I really appreciate it, and it's always good because this is way more complicated, I think, than what most people think when they're in their house. So.
Well, thank you so much for having us.
Way more complicated. Great. Thank you. All right. With that, we have now a public comment portion, and do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No? All right. Is there anyone who's signed up?
No.
Anyone in council chambers? Okay, with that, we will move now to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
All right. So it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Agabi. So it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Agabi. Uh, and with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right. With that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting of March uh fifth. Uh, payment vouchers from the finance department. Uh, resolution number R twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven, which amends the twenty twenty four fee resolution. Um, which came from the General Government Committee, uh Fire Mobilization Interagency Agreement with the Washington State Patrol. That also came that came from the Public Health and Safety Committee. And intergovernmental EMS contract with Thurston County uh for basic life support funding of twenty twenty four extension, and that also came from the Public Health and Safety Committee. Uh, next is uh for council consideration, ordinance number O twenty twenty three dash zero one seven. The TMC uh eighteen point three eight um floodplain overlay. And Erica Smith Erickson, I believe, is doing the presentation tonight. Welcome, Erica.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. All right, tonight I am going to be presenting on ordinance O two O two three zero one seven, the floodplain overlay amendments. Uh, last time I presented was at the work session. Um, let's go ahead and get started. A little bit of background on the floodplain ordinance. Um, close to three hundred jurisdictions, which includes towns, cities, and counties and tribes, participate in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, continued enforcement of the city's floodplain management regulations allows FEMA to make federally backed flood insurance available to property owners within the city. As a condition of participation in the flood insurance program, communities are required to adopt and enforce flood hazard uh reduction regulations that meet the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, that includes the model ordinance for Washington State. In May of twenty twenty three, city staff completed a FEMA floodplain community assistance visit or a cav with the Washington State Department of Ecology staff, and they reviewed our floodplain ordinance. Uh, the community assistant visits determined that our floodplain overlay ordinance should be updated to reflect uh FEMA and state standards. Okay. On November eighth uh twenty twenty three, FEMA notified the city that the final flood determinations for Thurston County and incorporated areas, excuse me, which includes the city of Tom Water, um became final. Uh, the FEMA flood hazard, um, the flood insurance study report and the flood insurance rate maps uh will become effective May eighth of twenty twenty four. Uh, the letter from FEMA also notified uh the city that prior to the effective date of the new flood study and maps, the city must amend its regulations to be more consistent with the model ordinance for floodplain management. Each time FEMA provides a community with newer revised flood hazard data, the community must adopt or revise the um their regulations to be compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. So within the agenda packet, the staff report contains the amendments along with a summary. The community assistant, sorry. The community assistance visit determined our code was in fair standing, but there were amendments in three new sections that were required to bring it into compliance. We included new sections um or subsections for detached accessory structures, storage of materials and equipment, and a penalty section. The following slides are going to be a summary of the proposed amendments. And most amendments are intended to clarify floodplain definitions, regulations, and application requirements to help staff in the community. So the first uh section of code that was amended is definitions. Uh, starting um, the amendments help with the interpretation of floodplain regulations, and we added eight new definitions to the ordinance. The next code section we amended was eighteen thirty eight zero nine zero, special flood hazard areas. This section defines what areas are considered special flood hazard areas by referencing the updated flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps. To be consistent with the recently updated study and maps, our code must reflect the most current versions of flood data. Our next section of code that was amended is TMC eighteen thirty eight one hundred flood hazard data. This code section amendment is intended to clarify how special flood hazard areas are identified using base flood elevations and flood insurance rate maps. We also clarified the process in instances where the base flood elevation and floodway data hasn't been provided by FEMA. Um, the next section of code revised is floodplain development permit required. This code section amended, it's an amendment is intended to clarify when and where a floodplain development permit is required, and we removed passive language. Our next section of code that we updated was floodplain development permit application. Uh, this code section amendment is intended to add new permit application requirements, such as elevation certificate information requirements, elevations related to mean sea level, and engineering analysis requirements. This will help staff and applicants know what's required for a complete application. Our next section uh to be amended was TMC eighteen thirty eight one eighty for records. This code section amendment is intended to clarify what information is to be retained and what specific elevations are required for records and to be available to the public. Records would imply are permitting records. Passive language was removed and a process was created for the floodplain administrator to ensure construction will be safe from flooding when elevate elevation data isn't available, such as using historic records, high water marks, et cetera. Our next section of code is development and subdivisions. The proposed amendments clarify which type of land division proposals are subject to the requirements of this section. We added short subdivisions, short plots, and binding site plan proposals to a list of other subdivision proposals. It also adds base flood elevation requirements for projects over fifty lots or five acres. Our next amendment is to eighteen thirty eight one eighty four flood protection standards. This is an amendment to clarify standards for construction within specific flood zones, such as materials, um, material requiring materials resistant to flood damage, proper anchoring, elevations, and design standards to allow for entry and exit of floodwaters. In total, there were four new subsections or requirements. Our our next uh section to be amended is eighteen thirty eight two seventy, nonresidential construction. Nonresidential construction and improvements of structures must meet either subsection A or B of TMC eighteen thirty eight two seventy. Um, an example would be in A, uh, development must be one foot above base flood elevation in certain zones, two feet in unnumbered A zones, and enclosed areas below the lowest floor subject to flooding is prohibited. In subsection B, structures must be floodproof, watertight, and certified by a registered professional engineer architect. All right. Um, next amendment is to our manufactured home section. Uh, we added clarifying requirements such as manufactured homes must be elevated on a permanent foundation and securely anchored. It also states that anchoring requirements throughout um Tom Water Municipal Code or eighteen thirty eight or are applicable. We now have a new section proposed, uh eighteen thirty eight two eighty five detached accessory structures. Um, this is a section specific to detached accessory structures and standards for developing in the floodway. Structures um can be allowed would be used for parking of vehicles and limited storage uh and varying requirements such as size, elevation, materials, items allowed to be stored, and anchoring. Um, this is another new section. We have eighteen thirty eight three twenty five, storage of materials and equipment. Uh, this is a new section proposed for the storage of certain materials in the floodway. Um, materials, uh Tom Water Municipal Code eighteen thirty eight two thirty defines hazardous materials, and that includes chemicals, explosives, gasoline, propane, buoyant materials, animal waste, fertilizers, flammable liquids, pollutants, and more. Our next section of code is eighteen thirty eight three sixty floodway standards. This is an amendment to clarify standards for projects within the floodway and states that all construction shall comply with all flood hazard reduction provisions of this title. All new development is prohibited unless certified by a registered professional engineer, and projects that don't increase ground floor area may be allowed subject to the outlined requirements. Uh, we also included or added a penalty section for noncompliance. Um, this is establishing penalties for noncompliance within Tom Water Municipal Code eighteen thirty eight. Uh, it adds penalties for not complying with floodplain ordinance regulations and requirements. Uh, after further review of federal and state standards, staff have revised the language and removed all jail penalties and fines. Uh, compliance will be enforced under Tom Water Municipal Code uh Title one ten. A little bit about our uh SEPA and notice of intent. Our sixty day notice of intent for ordinance O two O two three zero one seven was sent to the Washington State Department of Commerce on December fourteenth of twenty twenty three. Uh, the process isn't complete and we received no comments. Also, our SEPA checklist for this ordinance was completed December thirteenth, twenty twenty three, and a determination of nonsignificance was issued on December twenty ninth, twenty twenty three uh with uh no comments. However, we did receive two public comments outside of the noticing requirements. Um, FEMA, um, so one of them was regarding uh development within uh the city's urban growth area and the Salmon Creek basin high groundwater area. And one comment was about our SEPA checklist um regarding the Salmon Creek basin high groundwater area. Um, this section, this amendment and this ordinance is doesn't affect mapping or designation of flooding or groundwater specifically. It is just to bring our code into compliance with state uh regulations and the model ordinance provided by ecology. Um, so this, this amendment was our code needs to be amended prior to the maps becoming effective in May. Um, and then regarding the SEPA checklist, um, it's a non-project SEPA. The the comment had concerns that we weren't affecting uh critical areas and protected species uh within the floodplain. Um, the code set, the code amendment itself is a non-project proposal, so there's not uh any development or impact to critical areas specifically uh for the checklist. Um, if anyone is curious and wants to see the proposed maps, uh they are available online. Uh, FEMA has them at their map service center, and we've included directions on how to see those uh pending maps that become effective in May. And I would like to ask, uh, that that include uh concludes my presentation. I'd like to ask if there's any comments? Questions?
Any comments? Um, I'll start with Councilmember Raltheuser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the great presentation and also for addressing the public comments. Those were the questions that I had. One other question, which I think I I already know the answer to. But um for some of these parts, particularly for the mobile home piece where it talks about um adhering the structure to the ground in a way that will reduce flood impacts. That's only for prospective developments or redevelopment, correct? It's not for existing?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Great. That was my only question.
Councilmember Swarthout?
Thank you, Councilmember. I had that question as well because I was wondering like with Western plazas, that in a floodplain, would they be required? Would it have to be retrofitted to have them anchored or at the time of sale, would they have to? Would the owner be required to have to have them anchored? No? Okay. You're shaking your head, so. He was saying, so.
No, like when you're done, I have a question.
Oh, okay. And then the other one I had too, when you about the new section where you're talking about like standalone buildings, will that include like ADUs? Is that part of the process um in that new section?
Are we talking about accessory structures?
Yes, yeah.
No, um, it is very specific as to what the structures could be used for. Um, so it would be mostly for like uh vehicles, uh storage of uh certain materials. Yeah, not um residents or living, living uh buildings.
So then my takeaway too is that if we have people applying for new housing permits, if do they are they do they automatically have to do the floodplain piece? Or is it just if they happen to be in the place on the map?
Only if these regulations would only apply if they're within a mapped flood area. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just I support all of this and I agree with it. The one thing I was thinking about is regarding manufactured homes is what would it look like doing an inventory of those, the older ones that do not have a solid foundation, right? Are uh anchored to the ground versus anchored to concrete? Um, right? I understand moving forward of new, and how do we protect current, right? I know it's not part of that, but that conversation moving forward, um, I would like to not lose that of needs or something moving forward or any detrimental impacts on those who are not new, if that makes sense.
Uh, yeah, we could definitely keep them in conversation. Yeah, so again, these amendments are just to make sure we comply with state regulations so we can still uh participate in the National Flood Insurance Program.
I appreciate that, right? And that makes me think of like, and what about those who are currently in the floodplains? What does that look like moving forward?
The hazard mitigation plan with the council.
Brett, can you come closer to the microphone?
The hazard mitigation plan through the council approved last month helps us start to address those issues.
Right.
Now, in terms of their prioritization, in terms of the things that we do.
Right.
The next step obviously is getting funding and then figuring out the process.
Right. Thank you, Brett. I just never want to lose like the new moving forward, staying current, and also everything else, right? How do you keep juggling all of that? Thanks.
I did. Uh, Councilmember Van Hooft.
Thank you, Mayor. Erica, I'm one back to the manufactured housing. Um, I'm, so if it's a new manufactured home being put in a manufactured in a lot or in a floodplain, but you also mentioned um like redevelopment or like. So like what would that look like? so like what would that look like? So if I own a manufactured home and I'm not anchored and I don't, I'm not on a permanent foundation, what would the city um consider? Where if I'm redoing some things, what, how would the city be like, oh, now you need to do this? Like, what, what would trigger?
Uh, that's a great question. Um. I don't want to speak out of terms, but I would say like a replacement of a manufactured home or anything that might trigger a building permit. Um, or that would have to go through our community development department for review.
I think Brad has it better.
No, okay.
Yeah, I think replacement with a brand new structure obviously would be number one trigger, first of all, being within the floodplain map floodplain area. There would probably be a level of if there's work done to an existing unit that exceeds the value by a certain percentage, typically fifty percent or so, then that would kick you into the, the, you know, the need to comply with the whole set of regulations. However, I don't think dealing with manufactured home, it'd be very difficult to hit that level because they're hard to repair to that level. So minor repairs wouldn't be covered by this, wouldn't trigger those requirements, but a major fix or new unit.
So that's a great point that Brad made with manufactured homes. They're kind of they're in their own category versus like a single-family residence or um a stick-built structure. Um, because there are certain levels of remodeling or um uh, it even applies to like additions, like porches and stuff like that, that would trigger these requirements. So manufactured home parks or many manufactured homes themselves um are a little bit different than stick-built residences.
Councilmembers worth up.
Um, this really does, as far as flooding goes, this really does apply like to where the warehouses are, right? Because I don't think of areas where we really have flooding. So if if that ever gets developed um for plans and everything, this this is where this plan will absolutely kick in. This is shaking his head up and down. I really.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, that would be um, are we talking about the brewery? Yeah, so that's in the floodplain. Yeah, so redevelopment uh that goes.
Would trigger that. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, I believe we have to take action on this.
Yeah, so if there's no more questions, I would like to ask the council to approve ordinance oh two oh two three zero one seven floodplain overlay amendments.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Uh huh. All right, so now we are to uh committee reports. And we will start out with uh Public Health and Safety Councilmember Agabi.
So for Public Health and Safety report, we met um last Tuesday. Don't remember what that is now. But uh it was a, it wasn't a very long meeting. We um the two of our items that we that we talked about were on our concerned and I know tonight, this were the fire mobilization intra-agency agreement with the Washington State Patrol. And then the second one was the um intra-government AEMS contract with Justin County for Basic Life Support Fund in twenty twenty four extension. And uh there was an item in our meeting that was for information only that led to most of our discussion, and that had to do with the um Washington survey and rating bureau uh W R W S R B, we sent completed a it will be of the fire department, which occur every five years. And uh according to the chief, uh chief, uh Brian Holly, uh currently Tom Water is uh has gone from four to plus three. And there are several factors that will lead to um certain criteria as up and down the um continuum. So currently, um the evaluation can say number of factors in the water system, fire department operation, fire safety controls, and this part. And so on and so forth. So uh we asked the question, what would it take for Tom Water to move from three to two? And currently uh in the state, I believe uh in county is now is in two. So we were um, we um, we talked um well, for Tom Water, one of the factors that is leading to us not being able to move or not that would lead to us not moving from three to two has to do with um we currently don't have enough FTE for our fire departments in most mostly in the area of uh facility inspections. So I asked the question, when was the last time Tom Water had a full-time staff for that particular program? And I was still two thousand and thirteen. And I was also told that the reason why we don't have enough uh FTE for that uh particular program was because even though we, even though we do our survey at a cost, that the uh amount of revenue that we get is not enough to pay for that position. So then the the question that is, what are we going to do about making sure that we're actually doing our yearly inspections? Because not only are our yearly inspections valuable, they are, they protect the city in terms of liability. And they also allow the city to recruit some kind of revenue. But if we don't do them because that position doesn't pay for itself or because we don't have adequate staff, then that means that we need to get a move on. Since two thousand and thirteen, we haven't have adequate um FTE for that position. This is twenty twenty four. That's a long time. Um, for us to say we don't have um staff. So that is that for Public Health and Safety.
Great, thank you. Uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on Wednesday, March first, March thirteenth, excuse me. Uh, we, as our first order of business, we selected a committee chair, and thank you to Councilmember Dahlhoff and Kathy for uh appointing me chair for another term. Um, uh unfortunately, we will be meeting at eight AM on Wednesdays. We will continue that schedule, so uh apologies to to the public and to everyone involved for continuing that eight AM timeline. Uh, we got a really fascinating briefing from Alyssa Sparkman from the county about uh Thurston County Rental Assistance Survey. They conducted a survey of everyone who received uh rental assistance from the E-RAP and the T-RAP programs. Um, when those were in full swing during the pandemic before they wound down this past July. And uh not only asked them how how those programs were serving them then, but then followed up after the termination of those programs to ask folks uh how they're doing now. There is um some really good data in there. One of the things that really stuck out to me was that there were a number of people who received rental assistance at that point in time that were able to essentially stabilize and stay on their feet and avoid houselessness. Those are um what I I think are success stories. But it also illustrated just the unmet need in the community, and that's also was just a slice of the community that received rental assistance. There were lots of folks that were not able to take advantage of those programs. But that was a a really fascinating presentation. Um, we also discussed an item that was on our consent calendar tonight, um the resolution amending uh the fees, which I know our our friends and our partners at the school district will be very grateful that we have now updated that fee resolution. And that was our agenda last week.
Great, thank you. Uh, Budget or uh Public Works Committee, Councilmember Sorthout?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, March twenty first at eight AM, and will be receiving an update from Bill Landauer on the Interstate Five, Trosper Road, Capitol Boulevard Reconfiguration Project.
Great, thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting on April twenty third at ten o'clock AM. Uh, now we will move to Mayor's City Administrator Report, and we will start off with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. I have a few updates for you this evening. Uh, the first I would like to provide is um I've been regularly getting updates from Craig Chance with the Housing Authority of Thurston County on the former Tom Water Inn building, which um they purchased and the city of Tom Water helped uh um them with that purchase, I believe. Um, they have been uh working to actually uh relocate the residents that had been living in that facility. That finally happened. The last person was moved on uh yesterday, yesterday afternoon. So um they very quickly, they're going to be putting temporary fence around the site. Um, they're going to be um adding brighter temporary lighting and um monitoring uh cameras. Uh, their architect, uh Craig Indicates, is going to be incorporating the city's comments in the update of the renovation plans. Um, and we'll, and they'll continue working with our permitting staff in terms of getting those renovations planned. The next step will be to engage a certified firm to clean the units. Uh, they're having to mitigate for meth contamination uh as well as um just in general preparing for that renovation work. Uh, and they are having, um, they have a goal of getting that renovation bid package ready by April tenth. So Craig was pretty excited about that today, and I um told him I would share that with you. So thank you for that support. And thinking about the um upcoming Summer of Fun, as you're planning your different uh events for the summer, just a couple of reminders and things to keep in mind perhaps. Um, council recess this summer is scheduled for the first two weeks of August. I know last year it was the second two. I can't answer specifically why it's the first two this year, but um wanted to make that um make you aware of that. Um, and then uh one of the things that we have done using our new full-time volunteer coordinator, Brianna Feller. Um, the Parks Department has created a calendar of city events, and we're going to be emailing that to you. And the specific um uh the specific purpose of that calendar is for you all to be very aware of the different special events and city events that are happening. And really to encourage you to use those as an opportunity to get involved and and have an enhanced engagement with people on a regular basis. And so what we're doing is by giving you that calendar, we're inviting you then to reach out to Brianna as you have an opportunity to think about whether or not you'd like to participate. And she's going to help hook you up with a fun way to be involved in those different events um that you uh want to take a part in. So really a a great opportunity for you to have um uh a chance to get in touch with the community. Um, and have some fun doing it, especially if Brianna is organizing that on your behalf. And then the the next thing in terms of thinking about your summer um and your council duties, it is a biennial budget planning process this year. So we do have a full schedule for you uh beginning in April and running through May and June. We have four separate workshop sessions that Troy is putting together. Um, they're going to be uh targeted to specific um information about revenues, expenditures, uh debt and debt financing, as well as budgeting. The whole purpose of that is to basically provide you with some background information and give you an opportunity to ask questions about the process generally and about those different components of a budgeting process and municipal finance. And then the budget work stops um uh presenting you the actual budget that the mayor is proposing uh will begin in earnest in September. So it will be a much busier year uh for work sessions uh this summer probably than it was uh last year. So just a a heads up. And then the last piece of information I wanted to share with you is that um back in February, I was invited by the Executive Board of the IAFF Local twenty four oh nine to participate in what's called Fire Ops one oh one. That's happening this week. Uh, Councilmember Althouser is familiar with that program. Um, and uh it's really an awesome program where the firefighters uh are um invited to bring their elected officials and the media down to uh truly experience what it is like to be a firefighter. So I have been fitted with boots and pants and coat and mask and hat, and I can even carry a a um a a a canister of air on my back and connect it properly. So I'm really looking forward to that, a little intimidated, um thanks to Councilmember Althouser, but um I feel like I've got a good crew, a good crew behind me. Um Travis Leva and Trent Brazee are going to be going with me to Fire Ops one oh one. So looking forward to that this next week. Leaving Thursday, hopefully returning sometime Friday evening. Anyway, that's all I have for you unless you have any questions.
I have a question.
Uh, Councilmember Kathy?
First of all, we shall pray for your return.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
No, uh, and in one piece, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Upright.
Yes, we don't want you to come back in an emergency vehicle or anything. Um, I have a a couple of questions. One that just now came up, uh who, who decides on our vacations? Because they've always been the last of August, and I don't know about this makeup of council, but some of our our plans based on the last two weeks of August.
I'm going to let Melody answer that question.
So what we have typically done um is we have tried to shift to either the second or the first half, depending on what gives you three Tuesdays off in a row. So this year, there are five Tuesdays in July. So in giving you the first two weeks off, you have a longer break. So that has been why we have done that.
I like the answer.
Okay.
That's good. Uh, Lisa, I have a question uh for you. I know um since you've been here, this has also been done, that people who write um letters about things coming up, in this case that have written to us about um the oak tree that you have fashioned something or someone has, and they've at least gotten some kind of a response back from the city about about that. And um I'm just wondering if the city has done that for people who have written letters or made comments and have invited them to come to the Historic Commission Meeting, and I've not seen where where have we listed it somewhere? So people are aware of the of the meeting time and place.
Yes, um, yes, to both questions. We have um responded to everyone who has emailed. Uh, that was primarily last Monday and Tuesday when that occurred. Um, I think Alyssa herself responded to probably fifty different emails. Uh, and then our communication staff uh responded to all of those that uh came into the council email address. Um, we are um continuing to provide notice to anyone who um uh, well, so one of the components of that response was to direct people to the website where we have a very specific uh page that is addressing the oak tree, and it has a very specific connection um or link to the the schedule of um of issues as well as including the 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 meeting on Thursday night. And uh we also do a typical, um, our Historic Preservation Commission meetings are advertised regularly as are all of our other meetings. And um I believe we are doing Facebook posts as well um and ensuring that we are providing information uh through our social media platforms.
Very good, because I noticed that um in one of the responses, there was no time or place. It was just mentioned that the Historic Commission was going to take this up. So I just wanted to check because I remember you've done a good job when there's been other you know, questions or giving people an opportunity to to speak or ask questions. So thanks for that. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right. So for my report, I had attended the Intercity Transit Authority meeting on March sixth. With that, we had um approved an extension to the Legal Services Contract for uh Jeff My- uh Myers to continue in that role. Uh, we also had a approval of the bylaws for the Community Advisory Committee. They had changed their name from Citizen Advisory Committee to Community Advisory Committee quite some time ago, a few years ago, but real- quite some time ago, a few years ago, but realized that the bylaws still said Citizen Advisory Committee. So that they, we had to go through and make all of those changes to those bylaws. We also had Bus Buddy Program was announced for the 10-year anniversary. It was Saturday, and I did attend that, which was on March 16th at the Olympia Transit Center. It is a great program where volunteers help with people learning how to do the bus and how to manage the bus system. Also, the progress on, there's more construction at the Olympia Transit Center downtown. So that was updating sidewalks and ramps and replacing some areas on the main platform. On National Employee Appreciation Day was yesterday. National Transit Employee Appreciation Day was yesterday. So there was a lot of information on that on the website, and I was, got to share that. We will have another Inter-City Transit Meeting, Inter-City Transit Authority Meeting tomorrow night at 5:30. And then yesterday, as well as other councils, Councilmember Alt Hauser and Councilmember Dahlhoff and City Administrator Parks, we attended the Deshute Estuary Planning Meeting. And so this was like the first of everyone being together. And so we were talking about the process, the schedule. And we were doing the first look at the inner local agreements. So there'll be a multitude of meetings on this with individual stakeholders and groups. So that is my report. So.
Debbie, could I have a question?
Yes.
I had a, a call from a, from a person that I met some time back that asked me if the intercity transit, because sometime back, they got a bike. I believe, and they think it was through intercity transit. And they wondered if you were still doing the bike program? Or was it combined now with someone else or whatever?
Oh, you mean the, the Rock and Roll Program, the bike, where they restore bikes and?
Yeah, restoring bikes. They wanted, they would be eligible for, you know.
Yes, they still have that program.
Okay.
And, and, go ahead.
No, I was going to just ask, so they come to intercity transit for that?
Yeah, you might contact them. There's some things that they do to kind of teach people how to maintain. They also look for volunteers to help, for all of the donated bikes to help fix them and get them to a level where they're usable. They also work with the school districts and others to teach kids how to ride and how to manage and maintain those bicycles. But yes, the bicycle program is still there. Rock and Roll is still in, in going strong. And at the new Patterson Street, if they, there is, there, I took a tour there showing someone else the other day. And there are so many bikes in there, you would just not believe it. But lots of people are very generous and donating those bicycles when they don't need them any longer. So.
Yeah, and this is very good, because this was a person who, who needed one, had gotten one for her daughter, and now her sister had moved. And so she is looking for one for her, for her nephew. And I, I said I was pretty sure that you still did that. And then do you still have that workshop or something downtown?
No, it's on the Patterson Street now, on Patterson and Martin. Yeah.
I'll check on it and get, get back to her. Thanks, Debbie.
Yes. All right. Any other questions? Okay, so I will now go to, I will start out with Councilmember Swarthout for council reports.
So this will be easy. No meetings, no report.
All right. Councilmember Alt Hauser.
Thanks, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow. And as you stated, I did attend the Estuary Funding Governance Work Group Meeting. The, the only thing that I would add is in our discussion of the ILA, we do have a ambitious, but I think possible goal of achieving the ILA by the end of the calendar year. That was one of the, the big dates and one of the big things that we're hoping to do by the end of the year.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thurston County 911 Communications Met. And Wendy, the Deputy Director, Executive Director, so many titles, has updated her report where she talks about monthly call volume. So I thought that would be interesting to all of us on a Tuesday evening. So for 2024, and this is January stats, incoming calls to 911, 12,125 for Thurston County. Did you know that? I did not know that. So you have the incoming calls 911, and then you have incoming calls non-emergency. So we had 12,000, right, for 911, 14,000 for non-emergency, to put in perspective. Outgoing calls, right, so calls come in and they're doing the calls 4,000. So for 2024 in January, total calls over 30,000. Just to put that in perspective, if you had an event and needed a conversation starter. And then Lot, Lacey Olympia, Tom Water, Thurston County, which we all learned today with Matt presenting. We are doing our budgeting process, so I love doing two budgets. It's going to be a great year. And also talked about Public Health Emergency Support Program. Olympia, City of Olympia has requested additional funding for portable toilets located at encampments to reduce public health and environmental risks, around $150,000. That's budgeted, and it's going to be around $24,000 to fund that. So I didn't realize they had that program where jurisdictions could request funds. So that's another example of how Lot engages and collaborates and partners with jurisdictions. And then we received information on Lot's pre-treatment program, which I will not bore you with, but I will update you later when we get more information because it's super exciting. It's like a chemistry set outside. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Agabi.
So last week, Tuesday, the joint Jaskoman meeting was canceled because we didn't have a quorum. We also met here at City Hall, so that was canceled. But on the 13th, I did attend the Transportation Board meeting. And at that meeting, we were briefed on the amendment to the 2024, 2027 OTIP. Amendment to the original document. So those are federal requirements as to play that substantial changes to our tip required an amendment to the original document, which then triggers an amendment to the STIP. They must love acronyms. So according to our, to the presentation, a jurisdiction who is involved in this cannot proceed with the project for which it has been awarded further money until the STIP is formally amended and approved by the federal agencies. And I don't think Tom Water has any of such project currently. Then we were also briefed on the overview of the recent study compared for the Washington State Joint Legislative Joint Transportation Committee that estimate how many non-drivers are there in Washington State and the demographic of the population, as well as how current transportation infrastructure and services serves non-drivers and impact those options have on the access to daily life activities. This was a lively discussion because it involves non-driving populations. See, for example, if you know of somebody who is wheelchair-bound or who has some kind of disability and unable to drive because of that certain disabilities, they face certain challenges in how they get from A to B when they need to get there because they are unable to drive. So we talked a length about this in terms of our actions. There were no action to be taken on this from, I thought it was just informational only. And then hopefully, there will be some actions down the road. So that was that. And then there was also a presentation that considered the establishment of a federal transportation grant funding set aside for support share on that trail preservation project. And this presentation went on for quite a while. And apparently, there are several trails here within Thurston Counties that have, that need to be taken care of. And because of that, there has been, there's a project, 2024 Project with a detailed discussion that was, that has been scheduled for April meeting. So again, we don't yet know which trail is going to be affected. But hopefully, we'll find out in our April meeting what those trails, what type of project discussion we enter. That is my presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Holtz.
So thank you, mayors. Last week, I also with Councilmembers Agabi and Dahlhoff attended the Public Health and Safety Committee Meeting. And at that meeting, we talked, we recommended that the Fire Mobilization and Regency Agreement with the Washington State Patrol be moved forward to this evening's consent agenda. And I just wanted to piece things together. One of the ways we would use that would be in an instance, like a decade ago, when the Oso landslide occurred and Tom Water did send personnel to that. So I thought it was timely and just an important reminder how we jump in when other communities.
Great, thank you. It looks like we lost Councilmember Jefferson. Councilmember Kathy?
No, I looked up and she was gone. I, I attended the Olympic Regional Clean Air Council Commission and known in the area as ORCA. And I left my minutes or my notes from it out in my car, and I didn't catch it soon enough. So one of the things I want to mention is that we're coming into springtime and we're coming into when people are doing a lot of, you know, gardening and dealing with limbs and brush and things like that. So this is a time when people might, they take advantage of the fact that they just like to burn it in their own yard or their own field or something. And so I just want to give you a heads up that you need to get burn permits if it, or you need to check and make sure that you're doing the right thing. And would suggest that you compost or take it to the landfill rather than start a fire somewhere. So there was a lot of talk about that. And then also that during this springtime, a lot of cities, organizations and so forth have their, you know, garden shows, flower shows, all of that kind of thing. And so ORCA is going to be present at quite a number of them from, you know, because we represent five, five counties in this group. So we're going to be, we're going to have a presence at several of these and talk about clean air and what to do this time of year and how you apply for different permits and things like that. So that's, that's my report for now. And that's my.
Thank you. All right. With that, we have done all of this. We do not have any other business. With that, we are adjourned. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.